Call the meeting to order, please rise for the flag salute.
Welcome to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Mayor Jakola.
Present.
Council President Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Conti.
Here.
Counselor Mann.
Here.
Counselor Salvage. Counselor McLean. Counselor Workman.
Here.
Thank you. The following items will move on to consent calendar. Following items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussions of these items unless the council or so request. In that case, item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Agenda Lebanon City Council Agenda February 12, 2025. Approval to award North Saniam Highway Waterline Extension Project and Grove Street Sanitary Sewer Extension Project. Board meetings from 2024 10-16 and 2024 12-18 Parks Trails or Parks Trees Trails Advisory Committee. Council meetings minutes for 2025 01-08 City Council Regular and Executive Sessions Meetings. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion has been made to approve. It's been second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. There was no presentations or recognitions tonight, but we'll move on to public comments. They have three tonight. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony card prior to speaking and handing it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comment to the council. The council may take additional two minutes. To ask clarifying questions, a city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at the speaker's request. So you got five minutes. When it's green, you're good. When it's yellow, you need to hurry up. When you're red, you're done. Fair enough? Okay. Usually, usually if you're in thought, I'm not going to cut you off. So, okay, first up tonight Wyatt King. Ward two.
Take your mic, turn it on. Red light.
Is that better?
Yep.
Yes.
Beautiful. I'm here tonight to request that we modify ordinance 0616010 Sections A2 and A4 to increase the chicken allowance from 1,000, one chicken per 2,000 square foot of lot with a maximum of six to 1,000, one chicken per 1,000 with a maximum of 10. I'd also suggest that we add a condition that reasonable care be taken to deter and avoid pests. I think that this is a balanced proposal that will help Lebanon. It'll help us have affordable, healthy food that we can trust. It'll help our community to be more resilient and more self-reliant if there's ever a hardship. It helps families ensure that they have access to quality food. Eggs are a superfood. They're unprocessed and locally sourced. Egg consumption is up because a lot of people understand they have great health benefits. And I think the clearest evidence that there's a demand for this is if you look at Wilco and Coastal Farms or any provider of chickens, because it's hard to get chicks right now. Egg prices are going up. Everything is going up and keeping people fed is a concern of families and institutions. Increasing the number of chickens also increases our community resilience. We know that hardships will happen. There'll be supply chain issues, pandemics, the looming Cascadia subduction quake. And if we've learned anything from the pandemic, it's that we should be prepared and not wait to react to disaster. Increasing the total number of chickens that we have throughout Lebanon means that there's just more food in town. We'll have enough to take care of our own families as well as share with those who need it. This makes our families and our communities stronger and more prepared to handle disaster. Now, a big question is, isn't six enough? I'd say no. You know, if you have high-producing birds, you might get about 300 eggs a year. That's not every day. And if you have six, well, that's a breakfast for a family of four. You know, if mom and dad have two eggs and the two kids have one egg, you're out for the day. None for lunch, none for dinner, none for any baking needs, laying some aside for winter through like glass preserving. It's certainly not enough to share with family or friends. And a lot of hens don't lay anywhere near 300 eggs a year. Production also goes down in winter. Now, I know pests are a big concern, and that's why I think that it would be a good balance to add a condition to A4 that reasonable care will be taken to avoid pests or deter pests. This gives law enforcement and code enforcement the ability to take care of a situation where someone is being an irresponsible chicken owner. But I think when it comes down to it, the difference between six chickens and 10 chickens is not going to be substantial when it comes to attracting pests. A messy chicken owner is going to have a problem with six chickens. A good chicken owner is not going to have any more problems than they would with six. So I think this is the right call for our town, and I'd request that the city council take a look at increasing it from one chicken per 2,000 square foot of lot to one chicken per 1,000 square foot of lot with a maximum of 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from council?
I'm going to show my chicken ignorance, I guess. Do you have to, do you have to give chicken shots? All my chickens are already cooked. Do you, do you have, do you do anything healthcare with them?
So different chicken owners will have different lengths that they go to keep their chickens healthy. Most of the time, you can just get a medicated food that helps with a lot of things. You might have to deworm them every so often. But chickens are really pretty easy to take care of.
I just didn't ask you that before, did I?
One per 2,000 square foot lot, maximum of six regardless of the size of the lot. Correct. Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a duo, Andy and Marilyn Belcher. Ward one. Whatever, wherever you want to sit. Just make sure the microphone's on. A little red light.
So my husband Andy and I are here because we read the most wonderful book about the climate crisis, if you could consider that wonderful. It was a book that was positive, let's say. But anyway, it was about the climate crisis here in the United States. We just returned from our daughters in Southern California, arriving the third day of the fire catastrophe. Jenny, our daughter, lives 15 miles from the Hollywood Hills fire, Hollywood Hills Fire, sorry, that just became so automatic, and 32 miles from the Pacific Palisades Fire. She lives 30 miles from the Altadena Fire. So she was right in the middle. She was okay, and her home was okay, except for the incredible debris caused by the 100 mile per hour winds in, that came through her yard, which her wonderful father spent a day cleaning up. Jenny was able to see the flames from her home, and during this time, she was able to constantly check her telephone, her cellphone, as everyone who lived in that whole area was able to do. The, the phone was letting people know if they should evacuate, if they had five minutes, if they had 15 minutes, if they have 30 minutes, if they should pack, if they were in the line of fire, but they were okay, they would let them know. It was amazing, this cellphone adaption to the, to the emergency situation. It was a really scary time, but it was amazing how comforting it was to constantly know what to do and when to do it. They were packed to evacuate, but never really ever had to do that. So here in the valley, we had a microburst, you might remember, a windstorm a couple of, a couple or three years ago, and we saw those trees uprooted all along I-5 here in our community. And it is our hope that should that ever happen again, there wouldn't be a fire started somewhere because we know what can happen with high winds and fire. There is a billion-dollar weather climate disaster once every three weeks in the United States, causing drastic financial hardships to individuals and communities. This fact was verified by Brooke Binghamman, who last October was inducted into our Lebanon High School Hall of Fame. She worked in the White House under the Biden administration for the National Weather Service. Sadly, she was recently relieved of her duties. So I come to you with a concern and a question, and that is if in the event we should be faced with a sweeping fire, is there a system in place where locals could be notified of warnings and evacuation routes? I do know that our city has a local emergency management document as well as an evacuation map. But probably Cascade School, one of the safe shelters, would not be of any help in a catastrophic fire. Sadly, it often takes a true life experience to initiate changes and solutions. Disaster preparedness, response, and recovery are overwhelming tasks, we realize. Our government is going to be limited, especially with cuts to FEMA. If not at all even present in such an event, nonprofits will be overwhelmed, and it is most likely going to be up to us. I thank you for your consideration for this concern. Oh, questions? Not that I have answers.
Is there any questions from council?
Marilyn Belcher. I'm sorry, I didn't say that. And Andy, who cleans up yards.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Stephen Patterson, Ward three.
Red light.
Hi, counsel. Oh, I do want it on. Okay, gotcha. Hello, counsel. My name's Steve Patterson. I live in Ward three. I'm here in support of Wyatt King's testimony about adding more chickens per square feet of property. I myself have six chickens, and right now, in the wintertime, with Oregon being so far above the equator, I get about two eggs a day. I have a family of four, and that just does not sustain us. Luckily, my mother-in-law has about 20 chickens down where she lives, and so we get a nice rotation in. Not everybody has that luxury of getting eggs in from other places. Within two years of a chicken's life, the efficiency of a chicken drops to 60%. And with the limit of six chickens, the, the likelihood of that efficiency dropping for a whole flock is, is pretty great. Being able to add a chicken per thousand square feet allows for rotation of chickens to be able to get new chicks in. It allows for the, some predatory resilience in the future. If you can have six chickens and then substitute four in as other ones age out, you, you have the ability to withstand and keep egg supply up. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you.
Have you ever had any, not, have everybody, have anybody ever came and complained about chickens before? Have we ever heard anybody mad about chickens?
I know Wyatt brought this up to me about a couple of weeks ago, and I did reach out to PD to see if they had received any complaints, and I was told that there have not. Is that still accurate? Thank you.
Two years? Three years?
Just curious.
Alrighty, thank you. The public comments. We'll move on to regular session. First up tonight is Build Lebanon Trails Fee Waiver, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. What we have before you tonight is an event permit and a request to have fees waived by the city council for Build Lebanon Trails Cheetah Lake Fund Run. They reserve the park every year, Cheetah Lake Park, to have their fund run and fundraiser. And we have charged this year $1,750 for the park setup, and that's according to our, our fees in the city that we approve every year. BLT has requested that we waive these fees. Both myself and Jason Williams have denied that request. Give you a little background on that. Not because it's Build Lebanon Trails, mostly because it is based on what goes into this and our park staff. We have two park staff currently that are available to maintain the parks. And quite honestly, it doesn't matter which group uses the park. There's still that maintenance that has to occur. So that's where we're at tonight. They want to come before you, ask the question. You'll see their attached letter on the back of what they do, and they do a lot of good things for our community. So we currently have no policy in place other than it stops basically at me. That doesn't prevent any one said group from coming in and, and requesting this from the city council. So as part of this discussion, I would like to see if the council would like to have a policy that we could, you know, go through and, and so that's doled out squarely to everybody, and so you're not having to make this decision every time one of these comes up. So with that, we can discuss that. I have some ideas about it, but I didn't want to bring anything tonight because until, until we have a feel for where the council wants to be on this, the council can obviously choose to make these decisions if you want it to come before you. And as, as, as an appeal process, the appeal could obviously end at, at me or even the Public Works Director for that matter in conjunction with me. But those are some of the things that we would need to discuss if we, if we bring a, a policy back. So with that, I can answer any questions, but before you, there's a, an appeal request. You can decide by motion whether to approve the appeal and waive the fees or not.
Exactly what are you asking for us to establish a policy or reaffirm a policy that's already in effect?
We do not have a policy currently in place. So what we would do is draft a policy for your review and approval. And moving forward, that's why this is before you tonight as an agenda item, because we do not currently have any policy in place for that. My question to you is, do you want a policy or do you want to handle it just like we're handling it tonight? And what would that policy look like if we decided to go that route?
My, my first thought would be that we need a policy because we could just get flooded with
Agreed.
requests. And so I think that, personally, I think that we should have a, a policy that applies to everybody, just a standard policy that, that we could set.
And we can definitely bring something like that back to you. In, in the essence of time, though, I think what their request is, since we don't have a policy in place, and it likely takes a month or two to get one in place, would be tonight whether you want to approve or disapprove of their request.
So how did you arrive at the $1,700?
That, that was based on our parks fees that are listed in the, in the city fees that we have. I have to ask Jason how they came up with the exact fees on that for the, for the daily use. But you can see, obviously, some of it's electrical. There's a water use fee. And really what this boils down to is we've got, anytime people of large groups use our parks, there is, I won't call it damage. Sometimes there's damage. Sometimes there's a lot of damage, but there's always repair that has to happen, especially after a big event. And whether it's reseeding, redoing the turf, there's, there's all that stuff that occurs. So if you think about, just let's say this one, $1,750 for a, a big event for that, that large of an area, that takes our two park staff, you know, that pays for them one day to go out there and, and take care of all that. So that's how, I, I believe that's how the fee was, was established.
My conflict here is that I'm a big supporter of BLT.
Sure.
But I would be a hypocrite to, to sit here and say we should do that for one organization after what I supported in the past. That would be hypocritical for me. A one-off, I get doing it one-off, but that does, there has to be some kind of, there has to be some kind of standard so that there's not favoritism or bias because of who's asking.
I just want to remind everybody too, we do have tourism grants that as part of what we provide the chamber, so we don't receive these requests. So folks can go to the chamber and, and apply for those, for those funds for these events like this. So I think, I mean, yes, we probably need a policy, but we also kind of have one in the sense of we didn't want these decisions to come to us each time, which is why we entrusted the chamber with making those decisions.
Has that step not been made?
I, I don't know, but.
I, I'm not aware of it either.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll say this. When I first read about this and, and molded over it a little bit, I thought that $1,700 is, is kind of steep, until I opened up the, the Bible and started looking through this budget and looking at the, the cost for our parks and rec and our trails and all that stuff and the maintenance we do, and everything from the electric bill to, to, you know, our employees out there doing this. So after looking that over, I thought, you know, it's not unreasonable to charge a fee. I'm not too sure exactly how much of a fee. After looking over this budget and, and, and reading the comments, I, I, I'm not too sure if the $1,700 is unreasonable. You know, I, so I did some research. I started looking into the budget. I started, you know, going back and reading newspaper articles and, and stuff. And what I found out when I started getting into the details and looking at the check register, I saw that, that the motel tax roughly brought in a quarter of a million dollars. Build Lebanon Trails last year got 25,000 of that. LDA got 30,000, the Chamber got 75,000. So the, the big question I have is, is who is it benefiting and, and, you know, how much does it cost? Those are the big questions that I have. Now, I know that Lebanon has invested heavily into its parks and its trails. And, and Build Lebanon Trails has done a fantastic job of building these trails. They're great folks. They're doing us a lot of good. It's going to benefit us for generations. And then, once they build the trails and they seed over to the city, and then the city has to maintain it and stuff. So the more trails they build, the more maintenance we're going to, costs we're going to be incurring. So
As, as part of that.
Not unreasonable.
Yeah, as, as part of that maintenance, I, I think everybody should be aware that they also, they, they also give $20,000 a year to the city for, for trail maintenance, for us to hire temporary staff in the summer to do trail maintenance. So
I didn't see that detail.
It's in your packet.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's out there, that they, they do that as well. And it is, I, I think from a staff perspective, why we said no, we need to be, I've got to treat everybody that walks through the door the same. And so that's why we're asking that there's a policy put in place. I don't want to have to be, you know, I mean, i- if, if we've got a policy, where council decides, well, this group or that, I, I, I don't really want to be in that position. I don't think you all want to be in that position. So unfortunately, this is where we're at tonight. I think from the sounds of it, we definitely will work on a policy. But what's before you is, is to make that decision tonight based on the appeal, since we don't have a policy in place.
Well, I think as Michelle pointed out there, the first part of that policy should be to request the grant for the, right? There's a piece already in place.
Yeah.
That we don't need to reinvent the wheel, and that step should happen. My concern, like I said, I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want somebody to come in front of me who, hey, I like this, and maybe making that decision based on that. That's not what we're here to do.
Same for us.
And previous council, I mean, we, the previous council had done that with Guitars Under the Stars once, and, and it was a big wave of money. And I think that it was at that point where we were like, council at the time moved it over to some tourism funds for grants. So they would receive those. And I just, I want to reiterate that process is in place. So I mean, do we need a policy if we are already essentially granting funds to another agency than to, to meet out on our behalf?
Well, I think the fallback would just be if they weren't eligible to get the grant from the chamber, then what do you do? I mean, there should be a follow-through from that, but
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's just my opinion on it.
No, I think that the, the parks and rec, the money that they spend for the trails and upkeep of the parks is part of tourism, and possibly some of that motel tax could go towards the Parks Department to maintain these trails and the parks. I know that we haven't done that in the past, but it's something that we should probably examine in the future. That would lessen the burden on the general fund to take some of that motel tax and, and use it you know, for maintenance of the trails and wages for the employees and, you know, garbage service and, and electricity and stuff like that. You know, it is, parks and rec is a part of our, our tourism here, and there's no reason why we can't spend some of those dollars on that.
Sure. Right now, it's a 70-30 split. We're monitoring a bill, excuse me, that is trying to redefine that tourism fund and possibly make it to where just exactly what you're talking about can occur. So we've been actually advocating for that at the state. So we'll see where it goes through this legislative process.
Any other comments? Well, I'd just like to say that, yeah, i- i- this is between a rock and a hard place because the organization does, does great things for the city and our community. But we also have to keep in mind, how do we treat everybody fairly that comes through the door? Where we don't have a process where, as, as Dave stated, you know, oh, I like this one. Well, this one I don't care about. They need to, need to pay more. Do we need to revisit the, the fees? Possibly. You know, maybe an idea is to do where it's, people put down a deposit for the, the parks. Because in the end, what, what I found out since I got in office was, was this, that a lot of times those fees pay for the damage, not saying that Build Lebanon Trails does a bunch of damage, but damage to the, the park systems. If you talk to Jason, you know, our Public Works Director, he'll, he'll, he can cite story after story of sprinkler heads after, you know, lawns being drove over, you know, fences knocked down, bushes pushed over, and, and we, you know, to keep the parks nice, we have to repair that. So where does that money come from? We're already tight, you know? Example, that is, is, is what we had to do, do just recently with, with service fees for the general fund. So how, how do we, how do we, how do we treat people well? Okay? How do we still be able to pay for that, the, the, the overhead to keep the parks nice? And how, you know, most importantly, how do we treat everybody the same? Because I think it's kind of a, whoever the decision, usually it's, it's Jason, if I remember right.
Yeah, it starts with Jason and then, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so how do we, how do we keep that as a level playing field? You know, when, I will also admit this, that when I got in office, I, I directed and talked to Jason, hey, that we need to make sure that we're, we, we don't waive any fees, okay, because of the damage and the amount that we were paying out of, out of, for, for those repairs. So but, you know, we can revisit this subject and figure out a better solution to that. So Rod, did you want to come up at all? Yes, please. Counsel, if you have questions, this the man to talk to?
Well, thank you.
Rod.
I won't take much of your time. I, I know you have a lot of difficult decisions to make and good conversation, really good conversation. I, I want to say that Bill Lebanon Trails is different than the other applicants, which they are, but from your perspective, it's probably going to hard, hard to see that because it's an application for a waiver of fees to use a park. So just in short, I think that, that the reason Bill Lebanon Trails is different, and I, I compare them to the Lebanon Community Foundation, and I really don't know of any other organizations, even in other communities, that nonprofits, that their goal is to build a city infrastructure for free. And they, Bill Lebanon Trails doesn't have any paid employees, a hundred percent of everything we do goes directly back to the city. Ron mentioned the twenty thousand dollars a year for, for a trail maintenance worker. Well, so far, we've been in, building trails in the city for twenty years, and we've invested over two-point-six million dollars in the city of Lebanon, in the park system, in the trail system. And that's a big figure. And before the end of this next trail project, we're going to be over three million dollars by the end of, of this next year. So that's a difference. I, I don't know where you draw the line, you know, I, I understand it's going to be difficult to say, well, that organization is, is different when you get the application and everybody's a trail user or parks user. So I just wanted to share that, you know, we're going to be here regardless, we're gonna, we have a mission, you know, to, to help, and we've been doing that since before two thousand and five, when we actually helped hire the very first Resources for Rural Environments intern to, to develop the Trails Master Plan, and, which was adopted by City Council. So we're invested, and we've been invested, well, for twenty years. So I'm just here for, that's my spiel, I guess, and if you have any questions, and we'll just accept whatever your decision is.
All righty, any questions from counsel?
No, I just want to say thank you. The trails are, are a magnificent gem of our city, and, you know, reading over the material in my packet where it says the two-point reinforces that two-point-six million dollars since two thousand and twelve, that's an amazing number. And you're right, that is something that the city, as well as our residents, have truly benefited from. So I know you're an all-volunteer organization, and that twenty thousand a year that you guys chip in every year for the city temp, trail maintenance position, like, I, I just want to say that I acknowledge the great work that you guys and the volunteers in the back are all doing, and while it seems like it's probably a no tonight, I, I just thank you because our city is better because of BLT.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Absolutely.
Are you, are you going to stick around for the whole meeting, Rod? Are you going to be here at the end of the meeting? Are you leaving now, or are you going to be here at the end of the meeting?
Oh, we're probably leaving after the, whatever year.
I'm going to contact you as a private citizen tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll answer that question. There's not much left on this agenda tonight, this one's a pretty fast one, so I doubt, we'll probably be done before he got out of his chair and got out that door. So.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, you know, like I said earlier, we got to treat everybody fairly, so, but at this point, we don't have a policy. We, we do have the ability to waive.
You do?
Do I want, I'll just be totally honest, do I want this put on our agenda every month to waive fees for the parks? I, I, I would say no. And the reason why is, that's why we hire directors and city managers and, and staff to, to, to have that authority to make those decisions.
The spider legs of controversy that would come from that are not something we want to get into, I don't think.
Yeah, so, so, but, but as of right now, you know, it, it's, it's up to this body if, if, if they choose to, to waive it, if they, if they choose not to, if they choose to have a motion, or if they choose to, you know, direct staff to look into a, a better system for managing this, that, that they have some better guidance, I guess. So I need to, need to hear from the counsel.
I think we've kind of settled on that direction unless, unless anybody dissents with us that we're not in a position right now, I'm not, to say yes or no on this. I think the first step should be go to the chamber, and that we need to just develop something that covers all this when it comes to us, instead of onesie-twos and for people I, I support or I'm not so interested.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I think there's one thing we can probably do tonight is direct the, the city staff to develop a policy. As far as the, the fee goes, I, you know, my first thought is that's kind of high. I mean, if I wanted to put on an event, I would have a hard time, you know, coming up with that.
Sure.
Money for, for an event.
Understood. So, so we can develop a policy, but where, where does that leave us with, with the ask tonight? I guess that's.
Well, we don't need a motion, we just need consensus, right? And I think.
However you guys want to do it, it's fine by me. I mean, that's up to you guys.
We would need a motion to waive it, but we don't need a, a motion to deny it.
Okay.
So.
I don't think so.
I think the consensus, unless there's someone that's going to put a motion on the table to waive it, that it, the consensus is that we're essentially denying it, but.
We're holding it now. I do like the, the deposit thing is a, a good thought to put under this.
That's something we could explore later, I don't think we can find it tonight.
No, no, no. If somebody has got some skin on the table, they're most likely to clean it up after they go, and if it leaves it the same as when they left it, then there's no damage.
Let us, let us bring back some, some ideas, and then we can have a little more robust discussion about what a policy could look like. And then, then you guys can weigh in on that, and we can, we can get something to where we're not having this, this discussion right here for, for each individual group that comes in. And I think that's where us as staff look at this as well. I don't want to prove that one, deny that one. We don't want to be in that, we, we've got to have some clear guidance on how we move that forward.
As far as a fee, wouldn't we just, if we're talking about changing that, wouldn't we, that naturally just occur during our budget process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rod, when is the event that you want to do?
May third.
When are you at? What?
May third.
May third. So we have time to develop the policy.
Yeah, I mean, for the most, we'll, we'll see, with us coming into budget season, it's going to be, it'll be tight whether we can get a policy drafted and, and have that discussion with what's coming up here. We would have to have that done and approved within probably March meeting.
Are you okay with that, Rod?
To wait for the.
Okay with what Ron is proposing?
Which is to develop a policy?
Yeah, I, I, if, if we can, we can sure put something together for March.
Well, let, let staff work that. As of right now, the, the, the waiver for the fees is denied, it sounds like by consensus. But we are going to work on a policy, and that possibly, if that policy is ready, that possibly could change.
Yeah, we could, we could look at that.
But I, but I hope that the, the, the group understands, you know, our thought process and why there would be a denial, is we have to, we have to look at everybody the same and equal. It, it, it's very difficult for me to say that, not because I don't want people treated equal, but, but because of what your group does for the city, it's very difficult for me to say, you know, it's, you know, it sounds like the consensus is, as of right now, is we're denying the waiver request. So, but I will say this, trying to end on a, on a, a good note, I will be at your event, and I will do it for free, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, Rod.
Thanks, everybody.
You going to run the ten K?
Are you crazy?
I said ask, you said you were going to be at the event, so I mean.
I, I used to be able to, not anymore.
It also says walk, you can walk.
We'll move on to the next item, as Department of Reports, City Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. So we are going to try something a little bit different moving forward. You can tell me if you like it or if you don't like it. I had a meeting with our director team last week, I believe, and asked if they would provide an update once a year, each of them, to come to before you, just a three-to-five-minute update. Obviously, you see Kelly a lot, but you don't see some of our other directors very much. And so that would give you an opportunity to ask them. We'll still provide, ask, answer any questions, of course, that are on the manager's report, but just to get them out in front of you a little bit more, you can ask questions. So Kelly's first tonight, but I'll go through a couple of things, and then I'll let her give you an update on the community development side. One of the things coming up, we're proposing a utilities work session in March, the first meeting in March, so that'd be a five o'clock meeting, start out, give you an update on status of the utilities, as we do every year, any kind of inflationary increase that we're talking about, and we still don't know what that would be. Right now, things look pretty good, so I think that would be pretty minimal at best. We have a joint City Council Planning Commission meeting scheduled for the second meeting in March, so that's the twenty.
Spring break, got it, okay.
What, what was the date on that first meeting, Ron? I didn't write it down. What was the, the date you gave for that first meeting?
Uh, the first meeting in March, let me get my calendar pulled up here, I'm.
First meeting in March is the twelfth.
The twelfth, and then.
Put together with that, it's not, it's not a, it's not a separate something. Sorry, I, I was, I missed something.
No, it's just, it's just a five o'clock start with the work session.
Never mind, my bad.
Second meeting is the fourth Wednesday at noon, so it's March twenty-sixth.
Yes. So that, that's what we're proposing for that. Budget and keeping with meetings, after the April meeting, which is on April ninth, we would probably schedule our first budget committee meeting on the sixteenth of April for noon. And that would be to hand out budget books, read the message, let Chair and I think Vice Chair on that, if I remember right. And then give you time, ample time, you guys set a schedule, when do you want to have your next actual budget committee meeting, give you ample time to go through the budget and ask any questions, and, and maybe we can clarify before we get to that budget committee meeting. So that's there. We're also, as part of our lobbying effort, we are proposing, looking at going back to Washington DC for the first part of April, to go back, and it's called Water Week, which ties in nicely with what we're doing at the legislative session in, at the state. It's a time for us to go back and hear new policy, a little bit of mingling, I guess you'd call it, with other water districts. But for the most part, what it is, is it's an opportunity for us to go back and meet our congressional delegates that, for the state of Oregon. So we're working on getting meetings set up with all of them, so that we can talk about two primary things, one being the need for infrastructure money, that, that our wastewater plant and the amount of money that it costs to improve these things. Right now, the way they're set up, it's just the last dollars in, and, and really, they need to be looking a little more holistic. So we're pitching that, and then we're also going to drill down into the drawdown with them and keep that hot on the press. So we will not be here the first meeting in April. So that means that the council president would probably be. Council president would probably be running the meeting. Yes, it would be pure chaos.
Ron, while you're on the drawdown, I have a question. Engineering hat-wise, has it helped us or hurt us that it hasn't rained as much as we normally would have this time of year? They stopped the drawdown and doesn't seem like it would fill up as fast. Does that help or hurt the water plant?
Uh, it depends, if they're in the middle of the drawdown and it rains, it's terrible because it just washes everything off the, those bare slopes. We still get, you know, good storm events, you can go out and look and see the, the, the quality of the river. I think the last time I checked, we were in thirty N T U, but yeah, it, it does, it does make a difference.
Doesn't seem like it's rained as much.
No, this year's, this year has been different, but, you know, the, when, when we were in the thick of it this year, we were at, you know, we were upwards in the two-hundred range, and, and that's some, some of the other things we've been doing, I don't know if everybody's heard, but the city of Salem, we had a meeting with them a couple weeks ago, they're talking about doing the same thing on the Detroit Reservoir. They have a slow sand filter, which is going to be detrimental, so I don't, I don't know where that's going to go. They're working a big group of them up there, and we've, we've kind of been involved with that a little bit, so, I don't know, remains to be seen. So those are the things we're going to do. We're really pushing hard on bringing value back to our town and, and getting some federal dollars put back into our town. People pay federal taxes, and we're going to go out and advocate for it. It's a perfect timing to go out and do that, ties right in with everything that we're doing. So we will be there a couple, three days in April, which happened to coincide with our council meeting. So Brandon will be here, probably in my place, and then Counsel Stine will.
So you're going to be meeting with staff or with legislators?
Our goal is legislators, but, but we'll see, some will be staff, but I'm guessing some, we're, we're hoping legislators too.
Okay.
Is the plan, so.
I just, I know it's, having done this in a previous role, not affiliated with the city, I know it's pretty expensive to travel, obviously, to DC, and you get fifteen minutes of staff time, and, and, yeah, I just want to make sure we're spending wisely.
Yes, and, and part of that, so the, so the only difference here would, that you would really run into is, is the air travel, and right now, it looks fairly cheap to, to go back there as air travel. The conference itself is, is not terribly expensive, it wouldn't be different than going to any other conference, so the training wise and hotel, and of course, the city does per diem, but yes, we're very cognizant of that. So if we didn't, if I didn't think it was worthwhile, I would say no, absolutely not, but I think we have to try.
Okay.
At least once or twice, and at least, so we can say that we've done it, if we're really going to push to bring, bring those dollars back here and, and get some change made there, so.
Yeah, I agree, I just, I really, I'm really hoping for the contingency, or the people that go, that you guys can meet with, with, you know, legislators and not just the fifteen minutes with staff.
Yes, and that's, that's what our goal is, you know, and we'll see, we're talking about probably setting up meetings with not just our congressional delegate, but others that are on Ways and Means, and just whoever we can talk to back there in the couple of days that we're there, we're going to give it a shot.
Great.
See what we get. So, uh, there's that. We spent some time at City Day, that was a couple of weeks ago. Stop. There's a long story behind that, but we were able to meet with a couple of state senators and a couple of our congressional reps to talk about this very thing. We talked about multiple water issues, wastewater issues, the tourism transient lodging tax, there were several other things that we, we discussed with them, and, and hopes of getting some change, we're, we're going through, I think we went through ninety different bills, reviewed them, and we've narrowed that down to about forty-two that we're tracking right now, and going to provide either written or in-person testimony, based on what the council's priorities were. And so stay tuned for that. I think it's going to be an interesting legislative session up there, but we'll, we'll do what we can and see where we get. One last thing, and I'll turn it over to Kelly to give you a quick update on, on community development tomorrow. We'll see what the weather looks like. We're, we're prepared, our police department and Public Works is prepared, but if, if and should it be freezing rain, we'll probably not have folks at City Hall, Library, or Senior Center, or run our Lynx buses, just, we'll, I'll gauge it in the morning, but we are prepared for that. So if you hear anything, and we'll put out a press release should that happen, but we really don't want folks on city facilities with the liability if we, we. Our, our crews will be out probably maintaining safety, our main safety routes for fire and police. So with that, I can answer any questions, if you have none for me, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
All right. Well, I get to be the guinea pig for this thing, so most of you guys see me every meeting, so this should be pretty quick. And every beginning of the year, I always put in a year-end report for the previous year, which I did in, in this agenda as well. So I'm just going to kind of go through that. Community Development Department has generally three divisions, obviously, it's planning, building, and economic development. We have had quite a transition this year with us having our economic development catalyst moving over to Albany, and us not filling that position. And so we've had a bit of a shift in what we do in economic development, but we're still figuring out how we can be, well, no, maybe it's not, there we go. So we're still.
Start all over again.
I'm not going to do that. It'll be a mystery for everybody, you shouldn't miss that first part. So we are still actually doing some pretty interesting things on economic development, which I will get to, but in terms of planning, planning has been pretty consistent. We, in two thousand and twenty-three, we processed forty-five planning applications. Hey, guess what? In twenty-four, we processed forty-five planning applications. There was quite a bit of a shift in the type of planning. planning applications. There was quite a bit of a shift in the type of planning applications that were processed though. In 2023, we had some really big types of planning applications. In 2024, they were much smaller applications, little onesie twosies of minor land partitions to just do a couple of lots here or there in comparison to some larger lots. But in 2024, we did process the largest subdivision that the city has had in over 20 years. And so we did have one large application. And we did also have some pretty large, long-range planning projects that we're working on. Obviously, you guys are going along with me on our housing production strategy implementation, which you have seen as part of our joint planning and city council work sessions. And then also FEMA threw in there for us a lovely mid-year shift that we weren't expecting with, with having to figure out what to do with their pre-implementation compliance with the endangered species act, which we presented to you. That is, is still ongoing with reporting requirements and identifying whether or not we're going to have to do any future code changes. So we're still monitoring that aspect as well. We did also lose lovely Dave McLean from the planning commission. Welcome here. And we did welcome Regina Thompson to the planning commission, who she was a lovely individual who decided she wanted to just come to the planning commissions even without being on the board to every single meeting. So it was a lovely addition to actually have her be on the board now. In terms of building permits, we actually saw a pretty big uptick in our building permit processing. But we saw a significant reduction in terms of the valuation of building permits, which kind of again goes along with the, the types of permits. It's a lot smaller types of permits, just a lot larger volume. So that kind of tells you how the, the building process is changing in the city right now. We're not seeing those large construction projects. And so in terms of economic development, our big focus is making sure that, that we're getting out into our community. We have started our business visitation program, as you all are invited to. We go out once a month to our business community and we get really positive feedback from the business community. We continue to have the businesses in contact with me as feedback and, and connection when they have questions. We are continued resource and connection point to them after those business visits. So it seems to be a positive connection point for our economic development program. And we have our regional focus of economic development as well, which is our rural economic alliance. That is our eight, nine city group collective that focuses on our regional economic focus, is trying to provide a business resource to our small businesses and also do business recruitment to try to bring businesses to our, our region. We also do business recruitment through Business Oregon. We actually just submitted a business recruitment yesterday. And so we're trying to also bring in businesses to our vacant green fields of industrial areas as well. So although our economic development functions are smaller, we're still trying to get economic development work done. So on top of all of those general functions of community development, we do a lot of cross work with Ron on, you know, the, the lobbying and solar and 10, 15, 20, 40 other things that we do on a daily basis. So lots of stuff that we're doing in community development, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you guys might have. So we had two businesses in the pipeline that are currently in development of building, buildings to come in that were processed for land use applications last year. So Tractor Supply is building a new building.
North of Walgreens.
Just north of Walgreens. And then what is the name of that business? Tunnel Radio, which is actually relocating from Corvallis, tangent, relocating from another business location to the west of us is relocating.
Same thing.
Is relocating to our city and building a new building as well. And like I said, we're actively doing business recruitment to try to bring businesses to our community as well.
The new car wash as well.
There is also interest for a new car wash, not the one that was processed when you were in the planning commission, but a different car wash coming and, and has an interest in the same area. So I am not speaking to that comment.
I just, no comment on that one.
That's my answer.
Yep.
Yeah.
12 years in.
Yeah.
How do we stack?
We are comparable to Lynn County. We're comparable to Corvallis and Albany. We're higher than Sweet Home. But we are in, in the right range that we need to be in. And we also have not received complaints from the, the developers that we have done. The last time, when we did our fees last year, that was the first time that we updated our fees in over six years. So it was time. Yeah. We put in a CPI escalator. So we are trying to make sure that the fees just generally stay within the range that they are supposed to be in. It changes year over year based on.
This year, I think it's about 2.8.
Yeah.
So yeah, roughly three.
I am ready to answer anybody else's questions. That's why I am here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No other questions? Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. We'll go in the next items from council. Lebanon Library Advisory Board Liaison. I, I had someone reach out to me and text me that they want to do this. Is that still, still the case or?
Yes.
Or is there, or are you contingent on if there's someone else?
I'm willing to, you know, see if there's somebody else that wants, that wants it. But I.
I'm not seeing people jump out of their seat.
No.
What are the functions? It's just the, the help administer the, the library and, bringing ideas. They meet just like we do and, and they, they.
It's a non-voting.
Different policies and stuff like that.
It's a non-voting position. You want to do it? Okay.
No, no, not at all. I, I just wanted to make sure that she, she texts me and I wanted to make sure unless there's.
No, I am going to challenge you for that one. I want the library.
Do you, so Michelle, do you?
Yeah, I, I do. I mean, like my kids have, you know, grown up in the library.
Anybody else want to go on here?
I want, I want the library.
Who's over there?
That's one that I actually do want. You take the, you take the commission for transportation, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's Michelle.
Yay.
Okay. I was about to ask, I was about to ask the chief if he wanted to do it, but then I, Michelle was pretty adamant about it. So.
You're like, this is.
Two out of three falls for it or what?
Transportation commission again. No, I do love the library.
Okay.
And I would really.
That one's easy.
Be pleased with that one.
That one's easy.
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to public and press comments. Is there anybody from the press or, or public that would like to give any comments at this time? No? Alrighty. Through that. Next council meeting is March 12.
Can I ask a, a quick question? I was, I don't know if threatened, but I was innuendo that I would this year be the budget chairman. Is that still how it works? Are you guys still going to?
I would love to nominate you then.
Well, I was the secretary last time.
Thank you for volunteering.
At least what I was told is that that was the natural progression, that I would next time be that. So I'm prepared to be that. I'm mentally prepared to, but I just wanted to make sure that was still in the plan. So you know, so I don't have to fight you guys for the library.
You can, you can count on me nominating you for that.
Thanks.
Any, any other comments?
I, I had one, just on the, on items from council. I don't know where we are. Sorry.
We went on the public and press, but go ahead. We can step back.
Sarah?
It's, it's fine.
He didn't want any comments from us apparently.
Okay. Are we, I didn't want to bring this up while during the comment section, but where are we with the chickens piece? And is there going to be communication back? Like, I didn't realize the ordinance allowed for a formal permitting process where there's like a, can you explain that? Like.
Yeah. So, so I, I believe you can apply for a permit. Right now, if you follow those rules, you don't have to have a permit. But if you want to exceed the amount of chickens that you have, which it's written in our code, then you have to follow a formal permit process. And I'm, I, I don't see it in there, but I think we've got it written out. And I believe you have to get 100% consensus from your neighbors within, is it 100 feet? I don't remember the foot, the, the distance, but then you could technically do that.
The same as the goose lady needed?
Yes. So you would, you would have to, you would have to meet that threshold and come back and do that.
So that's where it pays off to be a good neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
But it also pays if you have one that's a.
Yes.
Can be unreasonable. So it can be unreasonable.
Adding to that without a permit process because then it's complaint driven. And by the time you get to the complaints, it's usually.
Too late.
Yeah. Then, then we've got the police department involved. And if you think about the lots that we're, we're building right now, our current lots, if, if you had somebody with a 5,000 square foot lot and they had 10 chickens and your house is, I don't know, 15, 1600 square feet, you've got driveway, you really don't have a lot of room to keep that many chickens. I understand where they're coming from and you know, it's not my goal to be heavy-handed. If council wants to change that policy, we can definitely look at that.
I definitely don't want to like jump into it, but it would be nice to know, like, do other municipalities do this? And do they allow for one chicken perds, you know, 1,000 or?
We could definitely look and see. I, I asked the question when this first came up. How did we determine?
That's kind of my question.
What was the determination of this?
Seems just kind of like a random number that was.
Well, I'm sure Wyatt Sutton is researcher. I spoke to him about it. And there's some truth to the fact, if I, if, if I had six chickens and didn't take care of them and left the feet every place, doesn't matter how big my, my lot is.
Oh, I agree.
It's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
So it's more of, I think if we, if we decide to up the volume, there has to be pretty tight, not just complaint driven, hey, this guy's leave, throwing his feet all over the front yard and there's rats all over the place. There'd have to be more to it than just upping the number, feels like.
Yeah. And I, I think the whole goal behind the, the permit process was to get your neighbors buy-in, right? So to make sure that your, your neighbors were okay with this. And I know that can, that can be tricky at times, right? I mean, if you have neighbors that don't get along, then you're probably not.
One vegetarian ruined the whole thing.
Exactly. So.
The ordinance has no roosters.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm happy to bring anything back. If you want to revisit that, we can change the ordinance or we can do it based on permit. More than happy to reach out to Mr. King as well and let him know.
My initial thought is one chicken per 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
That's my thought.
I personally would, I would personally support it with restrictions on the, on the, how you contain them, which I think are already in place.
Yeah. I mean, that.
Goose lady got in trouble, goes, the goose ran all over the place, right?
Yeah.
That's, sorry, call it goose lady. I don't know her name.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Enclosed or fenced area.
Yeah.
I think, if I may, I remember this whole, this was a big conversation.
Oh, boy.
Back in the day about chickens and whatnot. And I remember specifically, I don't know why we came up with one chicken per 2,000. At, at that part, I don't know. But what I do remember was the permit process and that, that was put in place for those individuals who are wishing to have more chickens permitted. And, and that would require their neighbors. And, and it seems to me that, I don't know, I can say, I don't know how many permits have been processed since it's been put in place. But I think that's, it's kind of one of those things where I don't know there's that too many people out there that are going to want more chickens than what they have. And those who want them can go through the permit process and do that accordingly. And I think that was put in place for those reasons. So for what it's worth.
We can mow around for a month.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, well, we would need to bring back an ordinance to, an updated ordinance in order to do that. So I mean, if that's something that this body wants to consider, we can, we can change that ordinance.
Why do you think the only thing that?
You need to turn your mic on, by the way.
I think the only thing that the public is requesting is the amount of chickens they have. So it's basically a, a, a single one decision to make is how many chickens. Cause we can stay with all the same ordinance.
True.
We have now, except for the amount of chickens.
Right, right.
If I may as well, and I know that we're, we're talking about number, but then you're also adding on a, a layer of, of regulation of there has to be sideboards, there has to be expectation of cleanliness. When you start adding on those additional layers, you are adding on a level of enforcement requirements and resource requirements and expectation onto that, right? And so there, there has to be a trade-off consideration of that. And I think that's why the, the permit consideration was there of when you have a permit, you know who has that. So you can put those sideboards in and you know where that enforcement needs to occur, which is why that permit already exists.
I've never read about chicken ordinance. I'll be honest. There, there's nothing like that in place now for six chickens? You don't have to have anything? Just throw them in the backyard?
It, it's already there, but then if you want to go above and beyond that, then you have the, the permit in place so that you have to be that good neighbor. And you have to be that, that good steward. And if you're not, then you have that mechanism to, to revoke it, right? Which is kind of what you're already talking about. So it's almost like, do you already have the mechanism in place that you guys want to have in place?
So, so.
Right.
Thank you.
So what, what are the requirements for the permit? Is there, or is it just that they have to get their neighbors buy-in?
They, they have to apply with the city and then they would have to get their neighbors buy-in and.
That's the only benchmark that they have to meet?
There is an option to be able to provide conditions as well on the permit that the city can place as well.
And I don't know if, do we have a cost on that? Is there a permit cost on that?
There is, but it's not ononous.
It's pretty nominal.
Is it annual or just a one-time?
I think it's just a one-time.
It's a one-time.
Can you guys just come back with a staff report?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
I'm sorry. I'm really sorry, but I'm just going to ask for it. Cause I don't really want to take this up. I just, I want to know more and I have so many questions. And I think we all have a lot of questions about chickens now. So.
Well, it sounds like we already have a, a system in place, but, but it seems like it needs refinement when it comes to the permit process.
So.
That's my take.
We'll bring a report back in the next month or two.
Yeah, thank you.
That basically will lay out what we do now, what we've got in place now. Should you want to change that, then we can change that, modify that by ordinance at the next meeting after that.
Can we also add what some of the neighboring municipalities do?
Yes.
Thank you. Case you've moved from Albany and you, you have less chickens now that you can have in Lebanon.
I can't believe that chickens has become our biggest discussion tonight.
I know. Before you guys got on council, we did like important stuff.
Same place my husband.
Kidding.
It's something about, don't count your chickens.
Fuck the thirties enough.
Okay. Any other items from council?
No.
Okay. I already, I already asked if there's any more public or press comments. It doesn't look like it. So our next scheduled council meeting will be March 12, 2025.